Monday, February 3rd. Workshop of the Louisa County Board of Supervisors to Order. The item on the agenda this afternoon is the discussion of the fiscal year 2026 Operation and Maintenance and Capital Improvement Budget Plan and Outside Agencies. Is that correct? And I will turn the meeting over to Mrs. Colvin so we can start working through that process.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the board.
I don't think you're on.
Oh, I'm way away. Can you hear me now? Is that bad?
Can you hear me now?
Okay. Hear me? Yeah. Okay, I'll move closer. Okay. So today we'll start off our budget process like we normally do each year. We normally start with our outside agencies and our capital projects and we look at our O and M. We have the outside agency information and the capital. We have had a finance committee just to start looking at items. So if you start at the first page I gave you of the outside agencies, you will see the department request for 25 or what was approved for 25. You'll see the department request for 26, the finance committee recommendation, and then that's where we'll just work our way down the list and go over these and y'all let me know if you want changes, if you want to bring some of these people in to have discussion with them. I can set them up for our next work session and we'll just go that way if that's okay.
Well, I would say that in order to save some time.
Okay.
Some of these things are required by code. So when we get to those, for example, the first two, that would save us time for discussion and conversation.
Absolutely. So the first two are the Rappahannock Juvenile Center and the regional jail, and those we must fund. So I will skip on down over those.
Must fund at those levels.
Must fund at their levels, yes. And if you look there.
Can I stop you again?
Mm-hmm.
If I remember right, just again to keep us on track, do we not normally take a motion as we move down through here for approval?
Oh, we, y'all have.
Since these are required by code, these two are some of the easier ones.
Absolutely.
Maybe you would like to say which ones are required by code?
Yeah. Can I do that? So the Rappahannock Juvenile Center and the Central Virginia Regional Jail and the Department of Health, we are required to fund those.
And?
And so if you were.
Thomas Jefferson Plant District? Is that one?
The three we're required to fund.
Those three?
Those three.
Entertainer, motion or any questions?
Are we required to fund them at this level?
Yes. Yes.
So we not get an option there?
Yeah. Those are the ones that are at the level of, yeah, we're regional and it's done through the regional board and these are ours based on our populations and they're done. The jail is actually lower this year by 99,000 and the detention center is just up about 12. So it actually nets to a positive number with those three. Okay?
To the chair, the chair will entertain a motion. Second been properly moved and seconded and any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Okay. And then the next two, Thomas Jefferson EMS Council did not make a request this year. They had let me know they weren't, so that's why you'll see that at a zero. They're still working through some of their state funding issues.
Y'all want to prove that one real quick?
Well, can you just tell me a little bit more why they're not making a request this year?
We had the issues last year with the state funding and while the state's still working through some of their audits and stuff, Mr. What, what, Pepe Winchell, is that how you say his last name? He just said they weren't going to make a request this year.
So no request at all, so it's not like they'll come back?
Right. I didn't want you to think that. I just cleared that one out. They just did not make a request. They will come back next year with a request.
Sounds like a plan.
Will be approved.
Been properly moved and seconded that we approve the recommendation zero funding for the Department of EMS Council, Thomas Jefferson EMS Council. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Okay. The Transportation Safety Committee didn't ask for any additional money. It's the same amount as last year.
Might be able to group a few.
I was going to say if y'all don't mind, I'll do that. The Resource Council didn't ask for any additional funding, the same amount as last year.
Wait, did we skip?
I skipped the ones that didn't ask for anymore. If you'd like me to do it differently, I can.
No, 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 it's fine. I'm just trying to catch up.
I'm just going down with the ones that didn't have any jump in them.
Next one was the Resource Council.
Resource Council. So Transportation Safety Committee, no increase or decrease. The Resource Council, then it looks like JABA had no increase or decrease. Region 10 actually had a decrease of 1,300.
Can we put that in there?
Yeah. If y'all are okay with that.
Region 10 and JABA.
Region 10 and JABA. We can, we can just do five at a time if you like. And then the next one, it looks like offender aid had no change.
Yeah, this is negative.
Okay.
So can you call out the five that we're going to give?
So I did Transportation Safety Committee, Resource Council, Region 10, JABA, and offender aid had no increases over the requests from last year.
Okay. Everybody got those five?
Mm-hmm.
Second, second, then discuss, go ahead.
Mr. Chair. Under JABA, I would really like for them to be here because they have some answering to do to what they have done to the senior center, add to Betty Queen's center.
I think that they will come. They have their new director that just came on and I believe that they have done some answering. They met with Mr. Goodwin. He was aware of some of the issues that were going on with the senior center there. They have some new staff. I understand that they have a new gentleman who has changed the entire program and is doing a really good job and really well-liked right now.
Okay. And I appreciate that.
But we've been staying on top of that.
But I want somebody from JABA here to explain that because it is in a mess right now.
How about would you take JABA out of the equation? You could take out the motion?
Who made the motion?
He did.
He did.
Yeah, you did. I'll take it out the second.
You remove JABA, you remove that? Okay.
JABA influx the four then.
Well, ask them to come here, Mr. Woodward, and give us a presentation.
You think they're providing less services and asking for saving money? I'm asking. I don't, I don't.
Well, they, they had a full-time person that stayed there all the time. She'd been there for years. She's no longer there. They had a director of the senior center. I don't know if they still call them the director, but they're one, they're there one day a week. They were there five days.
So we're getting, you feel like we're getting less services for the same money?
If you want to call them services that we're getting there.
Okay.
It's almost.
So you have, so you have questions about that as a whole?
And the senior center is down from probably 40-plus people a day to lucky if they get to 18 or 20 a day.
I think it's on the upswing right now, though.
Well, that's news to me, but hopefully it is.
No, I've been working on this and I've had hands-on and I've even spoken to the new director and then spoke to you about issues that I've known and you brought those up and they are very aware and they've been kind of put on notice, but I'm sure when they come, they can tell you what their future plan is. But I've been very involved in on this because I've had a lot of the same concerns too. And I told her that, that this may, you know, other board members may look at their funding with question because of issues we've been having, so.
Thank you, thank you, Rachel. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Current motion on the floor is that we fund.
Transportation Safety Commission.
Or.
Transportation Safety Commission.
Region 10, the Resource Council.
And offender aid.
Offender aid.
And offender aid.
And the TSC. Transportation Safety Commission.
And which one?
Transportation Safety Commission.
And the Transportation Safety Committee.
Where is the offender aid?
OAR.
They're in orange.
I mean, where are they at?
Right below Schulte. 53100, number 5605.
See, we got OAR on the sheet.
Somewhere right in there.
I skipped down to the one that had the zero variance from last year's request. So that's the ones I was going down through. So they.
So the motion, the motion remove JABA and we'll request it. JABA, come and give us a presentation.
We're not even going to discuss JABA anymore because they're going to present to us, right?
All right. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Okay. And then the next five, adult community education has no increase in their request.
Why don't we go down these things?
I can't, absolutely. All right, let me go back then. All right, so go back up to child health partnership. Their request is just for 1,864 additional. The finance committee recommended giving them what they asked for.
Can you just pause for one second because I can't find child health.
The first one without checks up top here.
51010.
Sorry. I went back up in row in order.
Right there.
Yeah.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Coming back down the list.
Yep.
Well, let's just do them one at a time and.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead and let vote on them one at a time. Go for it.
All right, anybody have any?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, next is Feedmore. They requested 15,000. The finance committee recommended not funding them. We have not funded them in the past.
Because we have the Resource Council.
We have the Resource Council.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment about that?
Yes, sir.
That's who did Meals on Wheels here before. They lost their grant. JABA, I think, got their, their grant back 19, 18 or 19, 18 or 19. And I was told, at least that's what I was told by the paid person with Feedmore that was here. I carried Meals on Wheels for them for probably three years, maybe four. I think they ran a good program, but when I talked to this lady why they were doing away with it, and she explained to me that they had lost the grant, and I think it's JABA. Doesn't JABA have some type of?
I feel like.
I think I read that in here.
I thought the Resource Council, I thought Ray's running Feedmore through the Resource Council.
That's what.
That's my understanding.
The Resource Council did mention they were working with Feedmore.
And there was a battle over the grant, the federal money. I appreciate what y'all's decision was and I'll back you 100%. I think they're a good organization, but how many people do we need running Meals on Wheels in Louisa County? I don't have an answer for that.
My question is here, maybe we need a little bit more background on that because I'm pretty sure when I've talked to Mr. Runnet that Feedmore is through the Resource Council now. So would we be cutting funding that's coming from them?
We're not cutting, we didn't fund them last year.
Yeah. We have not funded Feedmore since I have been here for the past eight years because.
It provides them box food that they give out down there. Feedmore's a huge place in Richmond.
Yes.
But what I got the feeling was that they're run very much like, what's the name of that thing that's next to Food Line down here where people take their stuff in there? Goodwill?
Goodwill.
Somebody owns Feedmore.
Okay.
And.
Gotcha. Okay.
Well, the recommendation of the finance committee was not to fund them.
And we've, we've been aligning ourselves that for services like that, we've been trying to push them to go work through the Resource Council, which we think channels and funnels and it centralizes the services. That's what we've been doing for years, trying to get that moved and align that.
When they had Meals on Wheels, the office was at the Resource Council building, but I think they just rented space.
Mr. Goodwin.
If memory serves, and it was back maybe 16 or 17, I want to say there was a grant that, sorry, back in 16, 17, somewhere around there, I want to say there was a grant, maybe a federal or a state grant, that I want to say Feedmore might have lost the grant or the grant went away. And I think we talked to the Resource Council, and this is years, years ago, I think we talked to the Resource Council and there was some arrangement by which the Resource Council could procure what Feedmore was providing. Do not quote me on that, but I seem to remember that that was how things got worked out. Now, we can check with the Resource Council and verify that now that it's still in place. I'm certainly not saying anything bad about Feedmore.
Me either.
You know? So.
Move approved.
Been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so MACA's request is for 30,000. Last year they requested 40,000, of which 38,000 was for the childcare. Y'all instructed me until the childcare program was in place not to do anything with that. So they have decided not to put the childcare back in place. They don't have the grant funding. So the 30,000 they're requesting this year is for their other programs like utilities and project discovery and whatever other programs they give. So the recommendation of the finance committee last year, the 2,000 out of the 40 was for other programs, was to keep that flat.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously.
The next one's a new request. Piedmont Regional Dental Clinic is asking for $2,500. I believe they're in orange. The recommendation was not to fund that one with the finance committee because Resource Council also does something similar.
Yeah.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously.
For help in emergency, their ask is for 1,809, which is only an additional 900 in the new year.
So moved.
Been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Adult Community Education is not asking for an increase. It's the same amount as last year.
Motion approved. Yes, sir.
Is that ran through the schools? Is that what Laura Richardson does? Like, just, just quick, what's the difference between GED?
It is for the GED program, but I am not sure where they run out of. I'll be honest.
I thought they're run out of 33 up here, aren't they? Because there's a sign.
Sage Building.
Sage Building, yeah. So that wouldn't be schools.
Yeah, I think this is the one that.
Yeah, I don't think it's attached to the schools, but it is for the GED program.
It's not. We've, we've funded them for a long time.
That's been a fairly constant, flat number for years.
Yeah.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Next is John, and they actually have a decrease in their request.
Should always be leery when John starts with a decrease.
No, they got a little bit of extra grant funding was my understanding.
And they have a fabulous new director who's spot on and doing some great things there.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Virginia Career Works is based on a formula based on population, so their request is just 141 more than last year.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded that we approve. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Next is the Reentry Council. They are asking for 5,255 more than last year, but they have one part-time person who works like 29 hours and another that works 10. This is to move the other person up with more hours so that they can accomplish more. So it's just to give that person that's already there a few more hours.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Next we have the Fluvana Louisa Housing Foundation. Last year was 65,000. This year's request is 165 for the normal housing foundation request, and then they're asking for an additional 50,000 for emergency home repairs. Finance committee recommendation is to do a 5% increase over last year to make that 68 to 50 instead of 65, and then not to do the new program of the pilot housing home repairs.
Any discussion?
I was hoping that we could maybe find.
Me too.
Some more money to use. I think that they do a good job for the needy folks in the county, but, you know.
I'm, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to agree with Mr. Woodward. I really think that we need to find additional funding. The services that they are providing is going above and beyond for residents in our community and they are constantly looking for grants and other ways to fund it, but I really think that it falls to us and it's keeping people in homes. And right now people can't afford to not have their home to live in because you can't find anything within reasonable pricing, especially our seniors. I really think that this program is something that we need to definitely look at again and try to find some more funding for them.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to get on this pony.
Get on the pony.
Use your mic, Mr..
I'm sorry. I'm going to get on this pony. I have a family in my district, and I've taken Ms. Highland over there. The house is beyond repair. Well, ditto, but the funding is needed for running water. I've also talked to some charitable organizations, but anyhow, in that, I didn't know there was such a need for home repairs in this county, and it's a huge need. I got to be pretty honest, we talk about affordable housing and this board has come a long way with that, but what I've been noticing though, the quickest avenue for affordable housing is some pre-existing homes.
Yeah.
It's going to probably be one of the biggest avenue to affordable housing is pre-existing homes. We got multiple families living in them.
And with what building costs they've done, Mr. Williams knows that better than the rest of us here. I mean, to think that we can fund them even just around where they have been, it just cuts down so much on helping more people. And I think if we can help, if, if they can help us be an avenue to helping with their affordable housing situation and helping people that can't afford to make the repairs to their houses.
Well, we need to be.
I think that's what we should do.
Clear. The first line is not for helping people with their houses. The first line is for helping.
Administration.
With administration and staff costs.
Yeah, there are two different lines.
There are two line items here. The other one is a program that they want to implement. The question is, do you really want to start off on that program? Do you really want to get the county government involved in that? What does that look like long-term? Where do we stop? Where do you start? And I can tell you that $50,000 don't fix much of a house.
That's right.
And unfortunately, Mr. Williams and the rest of the board, this housing money comes with strings attached such as matching funds. And I know, and I've seen some of the grants that come across, you may be available for, for 100,000, you got to match, but you also need paperwork, people dealing with those grants.
Yeah.
And I would be open, like this board has done in the past, given the, the housing association a one-year look at, you know, look at an additional funding and look at one year, because I know there are some concerns about staffing. I understand that when you're dealing with governmental agencies, people get leery because the money goes to staffing, but there is a need in the county.
Well, they're not a government agency.
No, 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 I know.
Okay.
I know that.
They're a private agency.
Well, you know, pseudo-government agency.
They're not even pseudo-government. They're 100% private. They have, they have a real estate portfolio that has some income-producing levels to it, and, and they have stuff, and they have money sitting out there too. And I'm not saying they should. And I'm not saying they should, but I'm saying they're not even quasi-government. They are a hundred percent privately owned.
Which to me means it's even more important for us to help.
Well, and one, yes, that is potentially one avenue, but another avenue would potentially also be to, they need to do some partnering. I ran, I ran a ministry for eight years. We built twelve homes at about fifty cents on the dollar through, and they got a block grant for it, and that's how they funded what they did. Howard Evergreen got it and did it. And so there's ways to do some things, and it's, and it's, its tax dollars don't necessarily have to generate and start in Louisa. And it's okay if they do, but there needs to be, in my mind, a community partnership with volunteer organizations, because you can take, you can take this fifty thousand dollars and you can go out and you can hire a professional team and get a couple of weeks' worth of work, maybe. You can take that same fifty thousand dollars and take all volunteer team, and there's one running right now, and it's running down towards the Hanover Richmond. It goes up to Fraxburg. We merged ours into a different one. And partnering with them, where they're doing the labor and the work, which is the expensive part, we just buy some materials and you stretch your dollars. You know, I haven't seen that that's what we're trying to do. Right now, all I've seen is that we have a fifty thousand dollar ask. It's like, it's like the tip of the iceberg that sticks out. It's just a little tip, and we fixed a couple of things, which is really important to the couple that you fix, but the problem's much larger than this. So this is not a fix. It's not even a Band-Aid, if you want to be honest with it. I've, I've been around the county. I look at stuff all the time for people. I have, we do repairs for people, and if they don't have the ability to pay, maybe they have the ability to pay twenty dollars a week or twenty, or fifty dollars a month for eight, nine, ten months and get something like that, and you charge them something just so they, they can, they can pay and enable them to it. And they have programs that work like that, but, I mean, this is, this is, don't sit up here at the D S. It's important work. Making fifty thousand dollars to go solve problems? You need probably five million dollars to solve problems in this county if you really want to solve problems, because they're rampant. You ride up and down these streets, and most of them are older homes, poorly built in the fifties and sixties that have received little to no maintenance. And I tell you what else is happening to them. People are scarfing them up. There's one on six oh nine. They scarfed it up. It's in a, it's in a poor community. They've, they've stripped it down, they fixed it up, and they're going to sell it, and they're going to sell it for probably three hundred thousand dollars.
That's true.
So it, we're in a changing environment here, and I'm not, I'm saying, I could maybe get behind something, but she's got to come and talk to us about, about a bunch of volunteers that's going to work, because you tell me you're just going to go out and hire professional people? You're wasting, you're wasting time.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe right now that they are turning away more people than they can take in, and I also believe that volunteer pools are struggling right now in this economy and trying to find volunteers, and they have a lot of really solid volunteers. I go to their board meetings, I'm involved on that end. I do believe that they are turning, I know, I know for a fact that they, because of their staffing levels, are having to turn more of our county citizens away, which I do believe that this can put them back, leaning back into social services. And in some way, we are going to be ending up paying in the long run for them, when I really think if we can, I know fifty thousand isn't going to go a long way. I know it's going towards staffing, but I do believe it is going in the right direction to keep people in their homes.
The hundred thousand is going towards staffing. The fifty thousand, it's two different, two different line items.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Can we invite Ms. Holland to?
If she'd like to come talk about the program, I'm in.
Yes.
Yes.
And talk about the request.
Sure. Can we do, can we do that, Mr. Goodman?
Yep, absolutely.
You want to approve, you want to? Approve the first one?
Which is the first one?
They sit on both of them. They just sit on both of them.
Okay.
So wait, I'm over this. All right. Next, we have Piedmont Housing Allowance, Alliance, I'm sorry, seven thousand, which is the same as last year's request.
Can we back up just a minute? When we asked Ms. Holland to come, I'd also like to get some very specific examples of the additional hundred thousand dollars, which I understand some of that, a lot of that is actually administrative, additional administrative help. But when we get the administrative help to fill the application out, where's the application going to get the money that actually fixes the problem?
Well.
And then, secondly, because if it's going to that fifty thousand dollars, we're going to blow through that pretty quick. But then, secondly, I'd like to know what their ask of Fluvanna County is and what their, you know, how it coordinates what we're getting for our dollar. And I agree with everything that was set up here, but it's funny. I read something that I said online about this time last year, that while that additional administration is helpful, it doesn't put one more air conditioner in a house, it doesn't fix one more furnace, it doesn't fix one more leaky roof, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't put a wheelchair ramp in. Where is that coordination and collaboration between additional administrative help? And once they fill out the application, we all know, I don't know what the status of money coming out of Washington is right now. I don't think Washington knows, but I don't think the spigot's as wide open as it was a month ago, so.
I have the Fluvanna information. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt.
That's all right. You said it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Fluvanna has funded thirty-four thousand two fifty in fiscal year twenty-five, and they're asking them for one twenty-five.
Yeah, so they funded about half of what we did, and they're not asking for near as much. So my understanding, a part of this money, and we had this conversation last year at this time, is because they have this big project and need to hire somebody to help manage a project, and I told them that I thought that was a project cost, need to go in the project, not standalone, because, you know, when the project's over, next thing you know, you've got people standing around. If you're not paying them out the project, you'll be wanting to keep them on and reallocate them for something else. So I think we had that conversation last year, too, here at the D S. Yeah. I gotta catch a phone call.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, to go on to Housing Alliance. Is seven thousand is the request, and that's the same funding as last year.
Motion approved.
This is a different organization. This is the Piedmont Housing Alliance, which is a different group, yeah, and they're not asking for any additional over last year. And the Finance Committee recommended funding them at their current level.
Yep, so move.
Second? Is this your second, Mr. Woodward? Did I hear a second? Did I hear a second just now?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the next two are J. Sergeant Reynolds Community College and Piedmont Community College, and they're based on enrollment of Louisa students. One request is an additional two ninety-five for Piedmont, two hundred and ninety-five dollars for operating for J. Sergeant Reynolds, nine hundred and sixteen dollars, and for capital improvements, two thousand five hundred-ish. If y'all want to do those two together.
So move.
Second.
Actually, we're doing three, correct?
Well, one's for, yeah, it's three. It's the capital and the operating, yes.
All right. Properly moved and seconded, we approve those three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, Ag Fair.
Next, the Ag Fair. Last year, we funded them at seventy-five hundred. They're requesting eight thousand this year. Finance Committee recommends funding them at the same level as last year.
And I will point out that they just received a fairly large sixteen, I think, sixteen thousand dollar grant from the Tourism Advisory Committee.
Oh, did they?
Yes.
That was for something separate. This is their normal.
Okay.
Stage improvements and act.
The grant.
Yep.
Yes.
Motion?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, Historical Society. They were funded five thousand last year. They're requesting thirty-nine thousand six hundred this year. The board is, the Finance Committee is recommending funding them at ten thousand this year. They also just received some grant funding.
How much grant funding did they receive?
Nineteen thousand.
Thank you. I did not bring those amounts with me. I should have.
Chair entertain a motion?
So move.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, that we approve the funding for this for the society at ten thousand dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The Arts Center, they have been funded at sixty thousand. They are requesting eighty thousand this year. Finance Committee is recommending to keep it at sixty thousand.
So move.
Second.
And properly moved and seconded, we approve the Arts Center funding at sixty thousand dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have the Jefferson Madison Regional Library. They're requesting four hundred and seventy-nine, six forty-eight. This is going to increase to forty-six thousand three hundred, but their health insurance went up about thirty percent for their staffing.
Starbucks.
So it's, and it's a minimal increase for their staff, just to keep their staff in line, so that's what that is for. The Finance Committee recommends giving them the funding that they're requesting.
Motion approved. Yeah, I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Under duress, yes.
The forty-six thousand is over what I got you.
Yeah, that's the increase for the year.
To fund their health insurance increase.
So this increase is just for health.
Health insurance, and it is a salary increase, yeah.
Health insurance was the biggest part of the increase.
Yeah.
I'm, under duress, I said yes. Did you hear that? I would.
Motion passes six to one.
Next, we have the Thomas Jefferson Planning District. They're asking for fifty-eight thousand four forty-five, which is a thirty-nine hundred and fifty-two dollar increase over last year. Finance Committee is recommending the request.
So move.
Moved and seconded, we approve that request. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Any suggestions? Can we do the last five all at one?
Sure. I would do that.
I think it might pass.
I'd expect their health insurance went up, too.
Yeah.
Well, and the Central Virginia Economic Development Partnership and the Small Business Development Center are based on populations. That's what their increases were.
They had a population explosion.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And then the Industrial Development Authority is just incentives, because the airport's with us now.
That's the passback through, guys.
Yeah, pass through, yeah.
Passed back to the.
And then the Thomas Jefferson Soil and Water is only sixteen hundred and twenty-nine more, and they just had some small operational increases and no increase for lack over last year.
We moved and seconded, that we approve those last five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
So we've got to see two people. We've got to see Jabba and the Housing Foundation.
I'll get that set up for the next meeting. We have a work session at the next meeting at four o'clock.
You're so bad at, what, really?
I can.
We can set it for four forty. That would limit the time they could speak.
If y'all think you can do it in thirty minutes, we can change it to four thirty. It's your choice. I just wanted you to have the time you need.
We need it.
Okay. The next thing you have in front of you is the Capital Plan, and you'll see just the first five years of our Capital Plan. And so, and the next thing you'll see is our rough operational budget. So where we stand right now, I've got to make these few adjustments here to the budget, but where we stand was seven point four million with everything funded as a negative. We're short, exactly. And so, looking through the capital and knowing that some of our Amazon personal property revenues would start to come in in twenty-seven, it was recommended by the Finance Committee not to take anything out, but maybe to move the community center with Parks and Rec, just move, shift everything one year to one twenty-seven.
We didn't change the year. We, we, we added it to the second year. Shifting would mean we pushed it all out, and it happened a year later. This happens at the same time.
You were right.
It just doubles up next year.
For three years towards it. So what the recommendation is, is to not fund it in year one, but in the next.
And fund year one and two in year two.
Yes.
And same for the aquatic facility.
All right, I got to switch that, because it's not. Okay, I will fix that.
The, it's on the, it's on the third sheet.
No, I have it different. I moved, I moved everything out a year, so I need to double up the first year. That was my mistake.
Oh, you moved it out a year?
I moved everything out to start in twenty-seven, saving it, because we had large capital projects. So by the time twenty-eight, because it was, we were saying originally, and that's my mistake, I misunderstood. So I had moved that out. No, the aquatic facility, we funded at the four hundred thousand level. We did not move that out. We just moved out the additional in the aquatic facility. And starting the larger amount next year versus this year, and we kept that in the same year, but the community center, but I can fix that, if that's what y'all so choose me to do.
It picks up about three point six million dollars.
Yeah.
It doesn't kill us, because we pick up an extra twelve million dollars in revenue the following year.
Yeah, long story short, if we move that three point six out, we still need to fund, we need to find an additional three point eight million in savings.
Mr. Burner has a question.
Is there anything in here that goes towards paying down the debt that we've got?
Not in twenty-six. In my projections for twenty-seven and out, once the funding starts coming from the additional funding streams from Amazon, I do have in my projections in future years, as I've been working with the Revenue Committee with that.
Well.
In twenty-six, there was not.
So are we still at a hundred and forty-one million dollars?
I mean, we'll still make our debt payments. That's in there, but not extra.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yes, our amounts.
We currently owe a hundred and forty-one million dollars.
Yes.
Okay. Then I just, I have a hard time understanding why we are putting four hundred thousand dollars towards a swimming pool and that kind of thing and not paying the debt off that we've incurred. We keep adding to this thing each year, not just that, but other things that I don't consider necessities. And when there's nothing in here that's paying down the debt that we have incurred, and, I mean, I understand why we have the debt. There's things like the James River Water Line and that type of thing, but to me, there should be something in this budget that goes towards paying down some of this debt we've got. And I just have a really hard time putting more money into things like the swimming pool and pickleball courts and skating parks and all that kind of stuff, when we're not addressing the current obligations that we have. and skating parks and all that kind of stuff when we're not addressing the current obligations that we have. And so, I, you know, I'm gonna have a real hard time supporting this thing when we have things like swimming pools and that kind of stuff in here that's not, with nothing to address our debt.
Ms. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Barlow. So the, the debt we have is, is carried by bonds. It's, doesn't have the right of reciprocate, you can't, you can't pay it off in part.
All of it?
I think everything we have.
Ten-year call, you have to wait for 10 years.
Yeah, so, so it's, it's, it's call dates on it. So you can't just like make an extra half million dollar payment this year because you, you got an extra half million dollars sitting around. And, and quite frankly, the aquatic facility that you speak of, and it was a, it was a, it was an agreement made so that, that night about four or five years ago before we started, I forget what it was, so it didn't have to get passed that night. And we didn't have to fund a $10 million facility out of cash that night. And, and I said, well, let's, let's start a savings account for it. So in keeping with that, yes, that is a savings account. The thought is that in the '27 budget, which is the '26 tax year, is that, do I have this right, Ms. Colvin? The '26 tax year and the '27 budget, we will have 12 million dollars of extra revenue anticipated coming from Amazon. We'll have the '27 and the '28 budget, '27 year, '28 budget, we'll have an extra 28 million dollars. We'll have an extra 30 million. So, so the thought is that in those outlying years, yes, we've had some needs between now and then. And quite frankly, one of the things we talked about in the Finance Committee earlier today was taking that 400,000 out and not doing it. But it's just going into a savings account. I mean, we're not, it's, it's not like we're consuming it, it's setting it aside. We have about 9 million dollars, no, we have more than that, how much we got in our CIP? Long-term CIP, is it 10, 10 million?
It's 9.5, I have it here.
We got nine and a half million dollars in a long-term CIP because we've been squirreling and pigeonholing away money. We have 15 million dollars we've, we've kept in the NAPS fund. We've had to use it, we're using that part-time to do some cash flow on the school till the bonds come through for the elementary school. And we did that so we didn't have to borrow money too early. And we didn't want to borrow too early till we got it straight. We've pre-borrowed for the CTE building in that money that you speak of. I mean, I don't think we've, I don't think we've had any wasteful thing or frivolous thing that we're borrowing money on. We borrowed it on water, we borrowed it on a CTE center, we borrowed on a middle school addition. We, we pay cash for all of our school buses, we pay cash for, for, for everything else we buy, we pay cash for. It's just these big-ticket items that we have borrowed this money for. We even pay cash on, we paid off the loans on the, on the, on the landfill equipment. I mean, so we're setting aside landfill money and stuff. And we talked about kicking those monies to the next year, but I was trying to keep that money in this year because it always, the burdens always keep building up. So I'm hopeful that we can keep that, those savings. It's about 1.1, 1.2 million dollars, I think, in savings accounts money that we could defer this year if we had to. We're trying not to do that. And quite frankly, if you build an aquatic facility or if you build a pickleball court, and I use the word if because I may not be here when that happens, the goal would be to build it out of cash through a savings account through Amazon money. And, and I don't really want to renege on the deal we made, which was setting aside 400,000 a year, $400,000 a year for an aquatic facility, even though we're trying to do it in a different way with some different monies, we're trying to hopefully take it out of some of this Amazon money we have.
Number one, I don't recall any such deal that we made. I certainly don't recall being involved with a deal like that. Secondly, the, I think when we're saving money, we've put it earmarked it to a swimming pool, then we're giving people the ex, and I think rightfully so, the expectation that we're gonna build a swimming pool. And to me, when we're spending that kind of money, when we've got 141 million dollars in debt, and if we want to save something, then why isn't it in an account so that we can pay off this stuff once the 10 years is up?
I can answer that. We can't set aside like a sinking fund earmarked for debt. We can put money in the long-term capital fund that could be saved. And later, if y'all so choose, at that point...
The Dillon Rule states.
Yeah, at that point, if y'all so choose to defund that and pay off the debt when the call comes, you can.
I think it would, from my standpoint, it would be helpful if you earmarked that money to be going towards our debt later on. But I think when you're putting it in a fund for things that I don't see as necessities of this government. I mean, we do, the schools, fire and EMS, Sheriff's Department, they are core functions. These other things, I just have a hard time explaining to constituents when we have the debt that we have, why we're not setting aside something or why we're not paying that down instead of continually putting money in a, a fund that I think people have every right to expect it after you've saved for it for 10 to 12 years, so.
I did for the '27, once Amazon started, I did in all my projections do 2,000 a year until the bigger chunks came in like 29. 2 million, sorry, 2 million in a, sorry, I don't know what I said.
It's okay.
2 million in a fund. '27, '28, I put 2 million each year in the long-term capital in my projections. After that, the Amazon money's gonna be big enough, we should be able to go and put into long-term capital the majority of the rest of it you'll need for, for pieces of it. As it comes along, we should be able to save in that fund.
Isn't all of that speculative?
No, no, not all of it, go ahead.
I, I think to some degree, the answer to your question is yes. But there's bulldozers out there pushing dirt today, they're making a hell of a splash out there. Anything is speculative, the world, anything could happen. So presuming upon the future is, is not good. But what we have done is really secured us because we do have buckets of cash sitting around in places that if we do get in a problem, we can deal with it and handle it. So I, I understand your position, but going back to what the, the wonderful people in Richmond that run the Dillon Rule, that we can't create a sinking fund, we've, we can squirrel away monies in, in long-term capital improvements, we can put them away. And any board, a friend of mine once said that, that any given day that four people up here can make any decision they want to and do anything they want to with the money. And, and yes, we have it in funds for what the intents are. We're carrying 28 million dollars in OPEB, is that right? 28 million dollars.
Leave liabilities and benefits.
Will you ever need that money? I don't know, the, the accounting groupers say you might need it because if everybody quits at the same time and you gotta, you gotta pay them for all their, all their stuff, and, and we don't, we've never taken a penny out. And we've had people come and move and, and, and we, we, we handle it on a cash basis. So there's, there's money sitting in places that, that we're in a very good spot. And we have a plan and the plan's, it's got to ramp up and build. And we're, are we presuming on the future? Yes, we're presuming that Amazon is going to do what they say they're gonna do. They're gonna build the original 11 data centers. We're assuming that they're probably gonna build somewhere between 12 and, the 12th and the 36th one that they have on the plan. We don't know, maybe they'll stop at 11, maybe they'll build 15, maybe they'll build 20. But we, we've, we have projections on that. And we can't, we've had to manage the residential growth we've had here, which I don't think is our fault. I think we've inherited a lot of it. We're in this wonderful place, and it's a really bad place in a lot of ways. We have, it sounds horrible, we have the cheapest land around. We do. We, we, go to Spotsylvania, go to Goodwin, go to Almarle, see what they charge for lots. You think lots are bad here, go look somewhere else. You have, I remember, I was talking to someone when we were running around doing this internet stuff. I said, we've got really good schools, we've got cheap land, and if you fix this internet problem, we're gonna have a problem. Because everybody gonna want to come here. And, and we did. And that was William Hale, I told that. And he, and he paused for a minute, he's like, oh my goodness, there might be something to that. So, so we, we have a plan, we're working the plan. If you don't like the plan, tell us what you don't like about it. We can't create a, a sinking fund to do that. We've, we've created funds in different places. They're called things that are legally good and, and, and we have cash setting aside for reserves. And once Amazon revenue ramps up, we intend to, 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 to set aside money in our long-term capital fund. And when 10-year notes call, calls come up, we're gonna look and see if we can't pay them off. But in the meantime, we had to put a middle school in. And we didn't have to put a CTE center in, but I think we have everything in place that's, that's, that's really good. And, and, you know, we're in a great spot here. Our kids, we're investing in our future and our children. And if we delayed that for five or 10 years, I mean, quite frankly...
They're not the type of things I'm talking about delaying. The CTE, the schools, I think that's a core function. I'm 100% behind the CTE and stuff like that. But I also am, I just don't believe in borrowing money. And when we're sitting here on the deficit that we have, I think...
We don't have a deficit, we have debt.
What's the difference? We owe the money. The deficit, we in a hole on that, but I'm talking about with money that we are obligated to pay. To me, we should be doing something to reduce that debt.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I, I think the best thing, I think many people at this table agree with what you were saying, Mr. Barlow. And I, and I think you've got two committees that are, I mean, Mr. Williams first got on the Finance Committee, the first thing he said in one of our earliest meetings were, I want a plan to be completely out of debt. You know, to which staff kind of looked at each other and were like, that's gonna be a heck of a savings plan, you know, to build a, you know, a 30 or 40 million dollar middle school. And we need to be purposeful, purposeful about that if we're gonna do it. So I mean, the things we've issued debt for are the types of things that you're talking about. Water projects, schools, you know, that type of thing. And I think from a staff standpoint, I mean, if you all don't want to save for a pool or save for any of these other savings plans that we have, I mean, staff will do whatever the majority of the board wants to do. I do want to make sure we understand what, what your desire is with regard to the county's debt load, which I understand is, I think the debt, none of us want to issue more debt than we, than we can absolutely, than we absolutely must. And we certainly want to minimize debt issuances going forward. And there's no new proposed debt issuances in this budget this year. So if I am to understand your desire correctly, we already have built into the budget for every year, making payments to service the debt. To make our, you know, the same monthly payments that we would make on our homes, they're in these budgets annually to pay the debt off. So we will satisfy the debt and we're not issuing new debt in the contemplated budget. If I'm to understand what you want to do correctly, it is to pay off any debt that can be paid off early as soon as we can. I agree with that too. I think what Ms. Colvin is saying, we can't legally put money into a fund and say, this is to be used for future debt repayment. What Mr. Williams is saying is there are a lot of places in these savings plans that we're putting money that are available at your option in the future, even if Amazon doesn't happen. Any of that debt that can be paid off, some of it cannot. Correct me if I'm wrong, the VSBA money cannot, the school money cannot be paid off early.
Cannot be paid off early.
The VRA, Virginia Resources Authority debt, which is the water line, that type of thing, can be paid off after 10 years. So if Amazon comes, we could wipe out any VRA debt as soon as that money comes in. If Amazon doesn't come, you're gonna keep making the budgeted debt payments that you have, and you will pay off that debt one day. And you also have these savings plans that we have available for other things that you could use to do that as well. I 100% appreciate what you're saying, it's not, in my opinion, has no place up here. But I understand what you're saying about putting money into a savings plan that is named. Because it does create an expectation that one day, when that, when those monies hit a certain point, we're gonna do something about it. So I just, if you want a plan to pay off the debt that is eligible for payoff, we can get you one that is simply outlined. And you have two committees that are spending a lot of time talking about that. Your newly formed Revenue Committee and your Finance Committee are both very interested in doing exactly what you're saying. So I guess what I'm saying is, I think you have people at this table, both on staff and your colleagues, who want to do exactly what you want to do.
And we're working towards that. And I don't want to oversimplify this, and both of you at the end, and you can tell me if I'm wrong. But one of the ways that we're doing that for the debt that can be paid off early is that we're putting money in the long-term capital plan under different titles because we can't title it as debt service payment.
Right.
So that that money is there that, so when we get to the next, I'm pulling numbers out of the air now, 5 million dollar bond that we can pay off early, in this budget, there is 5 million dollars that we can say, you know what? We gotta pull it out. But it has to be listed under some line item because it cannot be set aside strictly to pay off that bond. That, I think that's code.
That is, because I, I was, tried to do it last year and I was told I could not do that, so yeah, can't do that. So I learned, there is a code section.
I mean, I don't think, I don't think, and then I'll let Ms. Williams and whoever else, I agree with everything you just said. But in the five years I've been on this Budget Committee, or Finance Committee, there's been money set aside in different buckets so that one day, there'll be seven people up here that go, we need 5 million dollars, let's take these 12 buckets and dump it out, and there's the 5 million dollars to pay it. Because you have to put it somewhere, the long-term capital plan is two things in my mind. It's a long-term capital plan and it's a long-term savings plan, if that makes any sense.
The, if, Mr. Barlow, if it make you happier, I mean, I, I don't care, it takes four votes. I mean, you can, you can close the aquatic facility fund, which has 1.2 million dollars in it. You could take the 400,000 dollars we can allocate, you could shove it on the long-term capital improvement plan. And just know that you want to get it, if you want to take it out and close that fund and not fund it anymore, but still fund the 400,000 dollars in the long-term. We've been setting aside 400,000 dollars, we've been setting aside money to close the landfill. We've been setting aside money for Bowler's Mill, which is almost done, almost have enough money to pay for. What else we setting aside money for?
Ammonia, nitrogen.
The ammonia nitrogen upgrade for, for here at the water plant, which we own a half of, the town owns the other half of. What was the other thing, is there one more?
Landfill opening, landfill closure, ammonia nitrogen project and Bowler's Mill are the four, right?
And then we also set aside for the aquatics facility, and we do the same with, it's a smaller amount, but election equipment in a small bucket, just to know when that's needed, the money's already saved.
So I mean, if, if you want to close the aquatic facility fund, then just say you want to close it, make a motion to do so, get three other people to vote with you, and we'll jam it in the long-term capital improvement fund.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. I may be asking for something, I'm trying to project a little bit, but I may be asking for something that's already here. But would it be reasonable to ask Mrs. Colvin to provide a pathway to debt neutrality? So that we, in the name of transparency, everybody understands how we're going to get from here to 10 years down the road?
I think we're developing it.
Oh, okay.
So the answer to that question is we're developing it. That's what y'all two started with this. It's gonna come back, it's gonna funnel back through us and come back to you, so I think we're working on that.
Okay, I think that, besides us, I think there's a lot of other people, if I'm on it, I'm great, that's great, I'd love to be on. But there's probably a lot of people in this county that would like to understand what you're trying to understand is how we get from here to 10 years from now. I think that would be a really good thing.
And it's not 10 years, the Water Authority bond, 10-year call is probably coming up in five years?
The one from 2016 comes up in '26 or '27.
Yeah, so you've got a first call on that one. That's a 20-year note, is that right?
A 30-year, I believe.
So you have two more calls, you have one at 10 and one at 20, is that right?
And then the one we just issued will be 10 years from '25, so, and, but I do have a plan. Now, the school bonds, you can't pay those.
Yeah, you can't pay those, huh?
Yeah, we'll just, I mean, we'll pay them, but on our no more.
The only two that we have the ability to pay off, is that, that the only two we have?
We have, there's, we have two JRWA loans and then the one for the Shannon Hill Utilities and Turf Fields. Those three can be...
I mean, the other thing you gotta keep in mind is, we bought a, we paid 50,000 dollars for a water treatment, a sewer treatment plant that was putting bad affluent in the lake. We've, we paid cash for the, the fix of it and getting it fixed up and, and cleaned the water up there. I mean, so we've been, we've been stroking a lot of checks along the way too and paying for stuff as it needs to and as it's come up. So, I mean, I, I really think we've, we've done a reasonable job as a board of trying to, trying to keep, trying to balance what we have, keep all the balls in the air while we're juggling, and still keep our eye on where we're headed and working towards. And, and we just, just started to get some revenue information, we just started to form this, this committee. I mean, so I, I would say that in the next 60 to 90 days, that we should be able to probably come back with a semblance of a plan on a piece of paper for what this looks like, we're just starting to develop it. And this is, it's kind of a pivotal transition year, to be honest with you. We're, we're at this, we're at this inflection point of, of, okay, here we are, and we, we really just need to get to next year, and then the year after that gets really good, and, and so...
Each year thereafter.
Yeah.
Well, there, there, there is some debate about that. Recent things have occurred where we're hoping that Amazon is able to do what it does at the scale it's gonna be doing. But there's, there's been some recent changes with, with, with data center technology. So I, I'm really hoping that, yes, everything that we're expecting is going to happen. They're not going to say, well, you know what, we don't need these many, you know, buildings because it, we don't need that many, you know, little chips and it's cheaper to do it this way.
Oh, I think with AI, you're gonna say we need more buildings and more electric and more water. But I, I, I want to make a comment on what you said and follow up with what Mr. Williams said. There has, since I have been involved, there's always been a plan in place to set aside certain chunks of money in the long-term capital to, to have these buckets of cash. The difference is, and I hate to jump on his bandwagon here, but what he...
Oh, come on, it's big.
No, no, it's a good bandwagon. The difference is, setting aside 400,000 dollars for a pool, which was a savings account. I'll be frank, I've said it here before, say it again, I will never vote to spend it on a, on a pool. But setting that aside was a substantial amount of money. We're getting ready to enter a phase, assuming everything moves forward and there's uncertainty of, to everything, that the amount of revenue coming in is increasing to the level that suddenly, instead of saying we can set aside 400,000 dollars, we can pick eight, nine, 10 million dollars that's coming in in additional revenue and, and pay this and pay that, or buy this in cash and pay this in cash. Because, again, I'm not minimizing the... Because, again, I'm not minimizing the, what's the number, 134 million dollars?
141.
141 million dollars in debt, that's a lot of debt, but when you look at it in the big picture, that's a lot of debt to me, but to this county government, when so much of it is in infrastructure and schools and the C T E Center, I asked the auditor specifically, when he was here three meetings ago, I think our total debt load was 4%. Does anybody remember if that was right?
I don't remember.
Close, what, at 4%? I said, how does that rate us among all counties and municipalities? He said, that's excellent, that amount of debt load is excellent. Do I want to see us lower it? Yes, do I think we're coming in an opportunity to lower it? But I don't want people to think that there hasn't been a plan in place to put money aside to be able to pay these things, because there has been, but it's been operating with this much money, now when this money may come to, to this much money. And then that gives us another option to look at other things that we need to do, which why I think Mr. Woodward's idea of, of a committee that we put together to look at how we, and I think Mrs. Jones is the other member for six months on that committee.
Yep.
On how we start to look at the future use of that money. And after six months, we'll appoint two other board members, so that we're all involved in that process, so that we don't insult drunken sailors by spending money like drunken sailors.
So, the other thing that we need to be a little forward-looking on is, in '28, we got almost $17 million worth of fire and rescue stations, and, and you also have a new middle school, a new elementary school, not middle school, excuse me, new elementary school, which is right now slated for '20, '30.
Yep.
Which doesn't just come with the school, it comes with all that crap you got to operate with, the teachers, and buses, and cafeteria staff, and principals, and, and that's, $42 million potentially in the budget for the actual physical elementary schools probably will be cheap, it's the operating every year and year and year that gets expensive, and so, you know, I mean, it would also be nice to, to think that, that one day, we'd be able to stroke a check for a $42 million elementary school in 2030. And, and maybe we, maybe we pay off some loans, maybe we don't, maybe we keep them, but maybe the next time the loan comes up, and we got a $42 million elementary school we need to build, maybe we write a check for it. I mean, there's, there's all kinds of, there's all kinds of flux when you start laying it out, and one thing we did, and when did we do this, four years ago, five years ago? We started asking all departments and everybody, and the schools and everybody, for what extended stuff looked like, when it stretched out, five years, and 10 years, and 15 years, and what that looks like, and it's, it's hard to put a, a measure on it, but, but at least you have an idea of, like, hey, we're going to elementary school, and there's at least a placeholder for, for it, so. It, it's imperfect, it's imperfect system, Mr. Barlow, I think we've been doing the best we can with what we have, I don't think we're in a bad position, we could always be in a better position.
I don't want to imply that I think we're in a bad position, I think we're in a very good position. The problem I have, and I think where the, the problem that I see is, I'm glad that we have these buckets, that we have money squirreled away in, that we can utilize. I think the real problem's going to be with the expectations of the people that you're taking those, out of those buckets, when it comes time, after you've eight or 10 years of expecting something, and it's been slated and, and named under that account, or whatever you want to call it, when you pull that out and spend it on something else, I think that's going to be a problem. It's just, to me, it should be putting it in a savings to help pay down the debt or to something, but I think, I understand what Ms. Colvin is saying, it's just, I think, we're kind of giving people false expectations when we have money set aside for a certain thing, and then don't use it for that.
Yes, so I, the only place that I see we have that problem is with the aquatic facility, is that accurate?
That's the primary.
Is there another one? Is there a secondary one?
I would say a lot of the monies that we're putting in, for things that I don't see as necessities for running, operating Louisiana County Government.
That we're saving money for?
I would, I'm going down through these line items, but when it comes to not just the pool, but if you have things for skate parks and that kind, that type of thing.
Okay, well, that we're saving money, I'm talking about things we're saving money for right now specifically, so if you get to another one that, that you see that you think we shouldn't be saving money for, and we ought to put in generic fund, would you tell us as we get to it?
I usually do.
I know, I just want to confirm it, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Certainly, as board members, we have the right to express our opinions, but like Mr. Williams, and you said, the ability that we had, I remember sitting on this board, and I had to fight like hell to get $1 million for a broadband committed, I mean, and knew $1 million wouldn't do it, but I knew we had to start somewhere for a broadband committed. Well, being in position to come up with the $15 million, changed.
We paid cash for that, too, by the way.
That's what I'm saying, changed the whole life of citizens in Louisiana County. And there were people who were going, I don't want no internet, shouldn't take, it changed, I don't remember the last time I seen a student at McDonald's using their laptops for, for technology. So those kind of things, and, and visions helped this county a whole lot, and I haven't met anybody lately, the question has been, when it going to get to me? That's the only question I've had, I know Doc, and.
I wouldn't go bring her name.
But that, that kind of vision has helped us tremendously.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to kind of back you up about, Mr. Barnes, about a vision, I know that I'm already getting calls, oops, I'm already getting calls from residents who are looking at this and are excited to see that we have a community center on tap in the near future, that we have a vision for an aquatic center, for the skate park, which was promised boards ago, that I really think we have to get off the ground, and we have slated, I'm getting people who want to help design the aquatics facility, who are top-level swim coaches, and people that are really excited that we could have this level of, our parks and rec could reach this level here in our community, because they see it in other communities, and they want it here, they're, they're driving for it, so I really do think that citizens are driving for what is slated ahead, and the fact that it's a vision on here, they see it, they know it's tangible, and they're looking forward to it.
Any other comments, questions?
I just have, just two, just reminders, we do have debt policies, and we are well within our debt ratio, so we do look good, I just wanted to let you know, we are in a good spot with what we have, and then we did add back in this fiscal year, almost $1 million in savings from carryover into that long-term fund that we put back in there last year, so that's also there that could be used for savings towards debt later, so.
And then I just want to add, not to beat this horse, because I think, I think Ms. Farido brings up good points, but Mr. Williams was talking about, down the road in the C I P budget, let me see where it's at.
2030 for the middle school, and 2027 or eight for some fire rescue.
Yeah, 2027, firing AMF stations, 2030, another middle.
Elementary.
Another, another elementary school, elementary school, we've said.
Not middle school.
Not middle.
Don't report Tammy, no middle school, elementary school.
Elementary school.
I said middle school.
Because I'm just spoke.
But that brings up a whole nother issue, which we're not going to talk about during this budget, this is a budget workshop. But once again, Louisiana County is in the top three fastest-growing localities in the state. To me, that is not a badge of honor, that's not a place I want to be, that will continue to have a drag on the ability to maintain the rural character of the county, it will continue to drive up revenues, expenses, rooftops do not drive revenue, rooftops, rooftops drive up expenses, it drives up school expenses, it drives up emergency services, and I think is, I hope, and I believe that it's what this board wants to look forward to this year as we move through the comp plan, is to work on how we manage that residential growth, and I think it would be worth noting, that while the county seems to be on a path of wanting to manage and slow down residential growth, both of the independent towns in this county seem hell-bent on expanding residential growth, and the county bears the expense, both from an emergency services standpoint, and from a public education standpoint. And there have been communications, and need to continue to be communications, between the county government and the town government, because they're at odds right now, and those are the things, when we look at our long-term capital, that are driving some of these huge numbers that the county is bearing the expense on, so that just, I can't sit here and go through this process and not say that out loud, so.
Um, I think it's a little, it's a slightly different take than that, so zoning in the, in the towns is set up, and has been set up from the origin mineral in the 1800s, I don't know when Louisiana was incorporated, but it's set up to have residential growth, it's been set up for that, it's been, the minerals been platted, it was overlaid on, you know that's overlaid, it's laid out in, in squares and wrecks, and, and it was overlaid on a regular piece of land, and, and what's, and we, if we're having an honest conversation, what's driving people here is the costs that you can buy them for relative to buying them somewhere else.
That's right.
That's what's driving them here.
It is.
They're still cheap.
That's right.
If you make a lot and mineral costs $100,000, and you make the water hookup cost $60,000, I guarantee you, you will shut down development in town of mineral.
You're right.
I mean, that's, I'm not advocating for that, but, but because it is, a lot and mineral, I don't know what a lot and mineral goes, because a lot and mineral goes for $20,000, and it costs $27,000 to hook up the water and sewer, it becomes cheap relative, and I'm not saying it's cheap, it's cheap relative to everywhere around you.
Yep.
It's the, it becomes the cheapest place, it's the lowest common denominator, and so, so what we have, Mr. Barnes, is the most affordable place to build a house in the region.
Don't be spreading that around, I think it's well-known enough, but, but you're exactly right, and I had a really interesting conversation with the gentleman that was the chief of police for the town of Louisiana, he's now the interim town manager, he lives in Loudoun County, was a police officer in Loudoun County, and he told me some really interesting stuff, that I think we can look at as people in Louisiana County, residents of Louisiana County, the board in Louisiana County, and it, it really shook me to realize, he said in the 1990s that Loudoun County was overrun with crime, and he said, by the early 2000s, it all changed, and I said, well, hey, in the world could that be, you know, just almost like that.
Drove prices.
He said it's because the price of land got so expensive, that the developers came in and bought up the rough parts of the county that were still cheap.
Pushed them out.
Like our two towns.
Redeveloped.
And they started building multimillion-dollar homes, and it drove those people to areas that the land was still cheap. So you look at Charlottesville, look at Alamo, you look at our surrounding counties, and that's happening to us, you know, the people are moving out from around us and coming here, and it's getting to be more and more into the two towns. So it was a really interesting conversation, and hopefully Chairman Adams and myself will hear some of that on Thursday, when we have our meeting, so.
Ms., Ms. Chairman.
Yes.
Um, if you look, I think the board has done a good job on growth areas, and trying to maintain our growth in those areas. I'm a big supporter of that plan, and keeping that plan, and Mr. Woodward, I lived in Clark County, when people in Clark County had on their bumper sticker, don't Loudoun Clark, and now that has changed drastically in Clark County. But I say, I hope we can find a balance, and I know the towns have really gone crazy with it, but I hope we can find a balance, because I'm very, very concerned about young families still being ate about home, I'm very concerned about that, because the only avenue I see right now, if your mom and dad own a piece of land, and can subdivide your piece, that's the only avenue I see right now, but I'm going to leave it at this, but when Spring Creek was first built, we had one of the hardest times convincing realtors to show Spring Creek, because at that time, our schools went where they were now, where now we got a great product in our schools, and that's a large part of our growth, we got good schools. Charles Martin, who used to be on the border supervisor in Alamo County, he's dead now, he told me a long time ago, when Alamo was pro-business, he said, Fitz, if you want to stop growth, let your schools go to hell. And I never forget that comment, but our good schools is driving some of our growth as well.
Yeah, great.
It's certainly not hurting.
Oh, no, phone people who say all the time, I moved to your county, I talk to parents all day long, I moved to your county just for your schools, just for your schools, it is a common theme. You are right.
You tell them to send your kid to school, then?
Sometimes I do.
Well.
Just saying.
I mean, I think this entire budget, this has been one of the most interesting budget workshops we've had since I've been on the board, but I think this, this whole budget workshop has highlighted a whole lot of the challenges that the county's facing right now, Mr. Williams said we're at an inflection point.
We are.
We are.
Yep.
This, this is kind of a transitional budget right now, because as we look at the budget over the next two, three, or four years, going to be a lot of dramatic changes, going to be a lot of dramatic changes in the county, or potential changes, how do we manage that? How do we manage the residential growth? How do we manage the debt? How do we manage the tax burden? How do we manage the schools? You know, we all sat here, and we're excited four years ago, when we announced the partnership for fiber, but at the same time, I remember, within a week, we were talking, once we fiber the entire county, and once everybody gets to service.
You take that.
With good schools and low tax rates, and where we're located, between Richmond and Charlottesville and Fredericksburg, and it makes it a super attractive place to come. And the last thing, I speak for myself, not for the board, but the last thing that I want to see happen over the next 20 years, is the population of this county to grow from 41,000 to 82,000. I don't want to see that happen, and I don't think the majority of the people in the county do, so I think, one of the, one of the things that, as we move forward, and I'll end this, unless anybody else has anything on this, as we look at some of this revenue that's starting to come in, and I know this committee's already started, and Finance Committee starts to think about it, I know county staff is starting to think about it, is there ways to use some of that revenue to protect the rural character of the county? Can we, can we, can we utilize that to protect what makes Louisiana, Louisiana? Those are the challenges that we have, and I think the citizens are going to watch with a lot of great interest to see how we handle that, so. Having said that, are we finished from your point, Ms. Colvin?
Just a reminder, 4 o'clock before the next board meeting is the next workshop.
Thank you so much.
What is it, what was it?
4 o'clock before the next board meeting.
Yes, ma'am, do you have anything, Mr. Goodman?
No, sir.
All right, we will close this workshop and come back at 5 o'clock, thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Colvin.
Thank you.
Thank you.